I'd like to welcome everyone to the Planning Commission meeting, City of Huntsville, November 25th, 2014. And I hope that as you came in, I hope that all of you were here while that sunset was going on. It was magnificent and it was not to be missed. So I hope every one of you looked out to the west and saw the beautiful sunset. Some of us stopped and made photographs as we were coming in. And I'd like to say Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I hope everyone has a good and safe holiday and if you're traveling, do be careful. Our meeting, it will consist of public hearings first and during the public hearing, you'll have a chance to comment on anything, any of the items on the agenda that you wish to speak about. There's a microphone on either side of the room and if you have a comment, if you go to the microphone, make sure that it's on and give us your name and address for the record and then we'll hear your comments. We usually listen, well, I'd say we always listen very closely. So if your neighbor's saying one thing, you don't have to repeat it. We're good at hearing all of those things and we're really interested in the issues that have to do with your neighborhood or neighborhoods that you have a concern about. Has everyone had a chance to? Oh, before we do that, I'd like to introduce the members of the panel, starting with Jennifer on the end.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Nelson.
I'm Carlos Matthews.
Jenny Robinson.
Steve Strickland.
Vince Dickens.
Janet Watson.
Laura McCauley.
Peggy Richard.
Kelly Scrimshaw.
I'm Les Tilery.
Jeffrey Rice, Lieutenant Huntsville Police Department.
Jim McGuffey, City Planning.
And I'd like to especially welcome two new members of the commission, Jenny Robinson, City Councilwoman. And Jenny is both new to the Planning Commission and a welcome return to the Planning Commission because prior to her becoming City Council Representative on the Planning Commission, she was the School Board Representative. Welcome Jenny.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to welcome Laurie McCauley. She is our current School Board Representative on the Planning Commission and we are very fortunate to have to be, to have the School Board represented and the Planning Commission represented as we go through the agendas and discuss the changes that will take place on an ongoing basis in the city. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes? I would entertain a motion.
It's approved.
Were there any corrections? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Our first item is public hearings. Item one, Harrisburg Estates, Phase Two, a re-subdivision of Track One of Harrisburg Estates. Is there anyone here to comment on Harrisburg Estates? Yes, sir. Please give us your name and address for the record.
I'm Morton Archibald. I live at 2117 Rothmore. I'm a registered professional civil engineer. I served 28 years in the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and I'm very concerned about egress and ingress into the subdivision. As I tried to explain to the city engineer when he showed me the plans for the intersection of Rothmore and Parkway, I told him he was making a bad situation worse and indeed, he proved me correct. It's almost impossible to make a left turn, if you're northbound on the Parkway, to make a left turn into that subdivision. And I object to adding any more lots or subject to any more houses being built until Aldot fixes that problem that they've created. Going northbound on the Parkway, there just past Mountain Gap, you get into a turn lane, you have to slow down where you really need, or you have to speed up, you're actually facing oncoming southbound traffic which travels anywhere from 50 to 80 miles an hour. And at a speed, you're going down a dangerous hill where you need to slow down and you have to speed up to get in. If you continue north and go in at the next, at the traffic light, there is no left turn light there. What would have been the ideal situation before this, they did this, would be to relocate Rothmore so that it comes in immediately across from Mountain Gap. It's too late to do that now without tearing down some homes. But I would think that there's got, they need a traffic light on Rothmore and they need a left turn signal there at the, at the next traffic light, North Meadow Brook. And so I'm just very concerned over traffic coming in and out of there. Plus the fact that Rothmore has been thoroughly chewed up by construction traffic and that's something that needs to be repaving. I know that's not the Planning Commission, but I hope that you will make a recommendation to the city that that be replanned. But I urge you to consider how traffic is going to get into and out of Harrisburg Estates.
Thank you very much, sir. As I will say, this is public hearing. We won't, the Planning Commission will not be discussing the items until we proceed into the subdivision portion of our agenda. So we're hearing your comments, making note of them and they will be discussed as we proceed. Yes, sir?
Can I reply to him?
Yes.
I'm John Gann. I'm a builder, been around a while. This, our house is in the second addition, it's not going to come out on Rothmore. You go out to Edinburgh and go to the light south, what were you talking about? So it shouldn't be a problem. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Gann. Does that answer your question, sir? Does that?
Well, I'm still concerned. I still believe that there's a lot of traffic going in there. For 28 years, I've designed and built and used transportation facilities from sidewalks to airports around the world. And Aldot just failed miserably. And I believe Aldot needs to be held to that. Again, I know it's not the Planning Commission's path, but hopefully you can hold Aldot to that.
Um, well...
And I do believe that a lot of the traffic into this subdivision is going to be coming into Rothmore and then coming around the shortcut there. Especially the south country. There's going to be more traffic on Rothmore.
Okay. All right. And, you know, for the record, we don't really have any influence with Aldot, though we do, we do discuss issues, for instance, they've been the same type of issues out at Hampton Cove and as, out in the Hampton Cove area. And as we've proceeded with approval of subdivisions out there, we always look toward discussing the traffic problems from Highway 431 into those subdivision entrances and exits. And they are now, Aldot is now putting in traffic lights and improving those intersections out there. So it's not always in vain, but we don't have any specific influence. The Planning Commission doesn't have any, any influence with Aldot.
I know that the city has been influenced with Aldot. Because the particular plans that I was showing for that intersection, the way they were redoing it there, was shown to be by the city engineers.
Uh huh.
And I told you, man, you're making a mistake. You're going to make a bad situation of Rothmore.
Uh huh. Thank you. Is there anyone else to comment on Harrisburg Estates, Phase Two? Yes, sir?
I'm Douglas Stevens. I live at 2206 Lougenia Drive. My house is on the bottom of the slope of the, where the new houses are on Rothmore. And there's a, I noticed when they started work, they built a water channel from the hilltop down to the bottom and where that water goes is right into the, not the sewer, but the storm drain in the back of my lot. And it's the only, only place I see for the water to go. So I'm concerned about having water in my living room someday. I don't know. They may change, maybe they got to change plan for that, but right now, that's the way it looks.
Yeah. Have you discussed that with Mr. Smith? Is Mr. Smith's engineer on that project?
I haven't talked with him.
Would, if you'd like to, to go out into the lobby and look at that with Mr. Smith, I'll hold the public hearing open while you do, but wait just a moment before you exit.
Okay, I have one other thing.
Okay.
There's about 300 feet of dirt dumped along the line behind my house. And I don't know what the plan for that is, of course, it's, I hope it's not that way forever, but I hope it gets leveled out for the new lots.
Okay. And you can discuss that with Mr. Smith, too. Is there anyone else here to speak on Harrisburg Estates?
I have one.
Yes, sir. Before, Mr. Stevens, before you exit, let's hear this other comment and then you can consult with Mr. Smith. Yes, sir?
My name's Jim Young. I live at 21...
Jim, I'm sorry, Jim.
Jim Young.
Yeah.
I live at 2103 English Drive. The southeast corner of this construction zone was temporarily sloped to allow the drainage to go back down into the drainage ditch that my upper residence is addressing. And on the bank of that particular drainage ditch, it's all concrete, it's a concrete structure. The runoff has eroded the entire wall of that concrete structure and something's going to have to be done about it. I don't know if y'all have looked at it, but all along the west bank of that structure at that intersection, it has eroded behind all the concrete and it needs to be addressed. I do have one more thing to say about the intersection. We appreciate the work that has been done at the English Drive intersection. It's turning lane, or it has no turning lane still, but the work that was done to widen the road was great. We appreciate that. That's all I can say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Young. If you would like to go out with Mr. Smith and Mr. Stevens to look at what suggestions that Mr. Smith may have about that eroded concrete, y'all are welcome to do that. Is there anyone else who has comments on Harrisburg Estates? Then I will hold that hearing open for y'all to have a brief conference with Mr. Smith and Mr. Gann if you'd like. So Harrisburg Estates remains open temporarily. Our second item for public hearing is MAPCO, a re-subdivision of Lot Two. Is there anyone here to speak regarding MAPCO re-subdivision of Lot Two? Hearing no comment, public hearing is closed. Our third item is Midtown on the Park, Phase Five. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Midtown on the Park, Phase Five? Hearing no comment, public hearing is closed. Item Four is Midtown on the Park, Phase One A, a re-subdivision of lots 89 through 93. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Midtown on the Park, Phase One A? Hearing no comment, public hearing's closed. Item Five is Pebble Creek, Phase Three at River Landing. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Pebble Creek, Phase Three at River Landing? Hearing no comment, public hearing's closed. Item Six, the Preserve at Inspiration, has been withdrawn. Was there anyone who came here tonight to make comment on Preserve at Inspiration? We'll leave that item open on the agenda. It could come back up next, next month, but we'll leave that hearing temporarily open. Item Seven is Providence, Phase Three A, a re-subdivision of lots 193 and 194, a minor. Yes, sir?
If you have any questions or need any information regarding that, I'll be happy to answer those.
Okay. Would you give your name and address for the record?
My, my name is Robert Owens. My address is 7007 Oak Creek Circle in Huntsville.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Owens. Is there anyone here with questions or comments regarding Providence, Phase Three A? Hearing no comments, we're going to let you off the hook and close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item, we still have one of the subdivision public hearings open, but our next item is location, character, and extent. Item A, Academy for Academics and Arts Theater Edition. Is there anyone here with comments regarding the Academy for Academics and Arts Theater Hearing no comment, the public hearing's closed. Item B is location, character, and extent for Grissom High School. Is there anyone here regarding, to make comment regarding Grissom High School? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Lisa, are you going to do zoning for us? Okay, thanks, Lisa Leto. Ashley, Ashley, it's Ashley. Ashley. I thought she said yes. She actually said Ashley. Thank you, Ashley.
The Cambridge zoning is newly annexed property. It's approximately 3.19 acres. It's located west of Zert Road and on the east side of Arnett Road. The proposed zoning for this property is Residence Two A, which is consistent with the adjacent zoning. This will be a future phase for the existing Cambridge subdivision, which is located here east of the property.
Is there anyone here to comment regarding the Cambridge zoning? Hearing no comment, public hearing's closed. Our next item is zoning ordinance amendment onsite video display units.
The proposed ordinance is to add regulations concerning the onsite video display units. I have an example of what those units look like. They're commonly referred to as pump toppers. They're commonly seen on top of gas pumps, as well as there are some ATMs that have these as well. They're used to advertise and currently, the City of Huntsville does not have any regulation, so that's what this ordinance is for. The units will be permitted in non-residential districts only. They may provide moving images and video, provided that they are not visible from any road right of way or any adjacent property. The units cannot be any larger than one and one-half square feet in size. Also, there is a maximum of one per drive-through or fuel pump and regardless of the number of drive-through or fuel pumps on site, the maximum limit is 10. Also, they may produce sound as, but cannot be audible from beyond the property line and they must be permanently attached or integrated on the units as displayed here. And also, there are some units that have the video display units attached to the side. And staff has created a definition for those video display units. The definition is as follows. A small sign intended to convey information, whether such information is accessory or non-accessory, to the principal, to the primary use of the property, to an individual directly in front of the unit.
Thank you very much, Ashley. Is there anyone here to comment regarding zoning ordinance amendment onsite video display units? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. We still have one public hearing open and I don't see Michael. Michael, would you go see if you can, can get them to come back in if they have their questions answered? We had a relatively short agenda tonight on the hearings and usually that works to give somebody a chance to talk, but with the short agenda, we sort of ran out of time. Okay. Okay, I understand that the questions that Mr. Stevens and Mr. Young had have been answered and that they're not going to make any further public comment. So hearing no further comment on Harrisburg Estates, Phase Two, the public hearing is Subdivision Committee. Kelly, I would like to ask, Kelly Scrimshaw, would you give us the subdivision committee report?
I'd be happy to, Madam Chair. The subdivision committee met on November 19th, 2014 and has the following recommendations. Flint River Apartments is presented for boundary plat final. Approval on 72 units, the committee recommends approval.
Is there any discussion, Flint River Apartments? Oh, I'm sorry. I am so sorry. Is it in order for final approval?
Yes, it's in order with sidewalks and improvements to be installed 11/25/2015.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Grayson Place, Phase Three at Sanctuary Cove, is presented for final approval on 47 lots. The committee recommends approval.
Second.
Is it in order for final approval, Jim?
Yes, it's in order with sidewalks to be installed 11/25/2016 and improvements to be installed by 11/25/2015.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Harrisburg Estates, Phase Two, a re-subdivision of Track One of Harrisburg Estates. The committee recommends relayout and preliminary approval on 19 lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot line between lots 13 and 14 and non-radio lot lines between lots 10 and 11. Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes.
I do have some questions. Perhaps the planning staff could answer. Some questions were raised with regard to ingress and egress that might be impacted here or any other impacts on traffic and ability to get out. Are you all seeing any concerns with regard to that?
I mean, traffic engineering reviewed the plan, reviewed the subdivision, had no issue with it. So, you know, based on their, their comments, we don't see any issue with it.
And Mr. Gann said it's not going to connect to Rothmore, it's going to connect to Edinburgh.
It'll be two points of access.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
MAPCO re-subdivision of Lot Two. The committee recommends layout approval on three lots with a waiver on the non-perpendicular lot line between lots one and two and two and three.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Midtown on the Park, Phase Four, is presented for final approval on 24 lots.
Is it in order for final?
Yes, it's in order with sidewalks and improvements to be installed by November 20th, 2015.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Midtown on the Park, Phase Five. The committee recommends preliminary approval on 26 lots.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Kelly?
Midtown on the Park, Phase One A, re-subdivision of lots 89 through 93. The committee recommends layout and preliminary approval on two lots.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Oakwood Estates at Lake Forest, formerly Phase Two. Forwarded without a recommendation pending further evaluation from the Engineering Division. And do we have that evaluation?
Yeah, we've had, our engineers meet on site and they decided to not do retaining wall, they're going to do a rip wrap instead. So staff does not object to the waiver of the sidewalk.
And the waiver includes a 450-foot of sidewalks along Shadow Court, across from lots 17 through 20. Do we take that motion separately from the final or?
I think we should, yes. Wait, it's, no, actually, it's only up for final.
Altogether, also presented for final approval on 39 lots.
Is it in order for final, Jim?
It's in order with sidewalks, landscaping, and improvements to be installed by November 21st, 2016.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Packard subdivision, Phase Three, re-subdivision of Lot A and B of Packard subdivision, Phase Two. Re-subdivision of Lot One of Packard subdivision, presented for final approval on three lots.
Is it in order for final approval?
It's, yes, it's in order with improvements to be installed November 25th, 2015.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Pebble Creek, Phase Three at River Landing. The committee recommends re-preliminary approval on 31 lots.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Providence, Phase Three A, re-subdivision of lots 193 and 194. This is a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot lines between lots 193 and 194.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to location, character, and extent. The Academy for Academics and Arts Theater Edition, number 829. A public hearing was held. The committee recommends approval.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Grissom High School, number 830, on the agenda. A public hearing was held and the committee recommends approval.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, we have a request to vacate a right-of-way, a portion of Wind Drive, located adjacent to Calhoun Community College. The staff recommends approval of the said vacation.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kelly. Vince, would you, would you do zoning for us?
Yes, Madam Chair. Item One in zoning, we had Cambridge zoning, 1424. Public hearing was held this evening. Committee recommends approval.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item Two, zoning ordinance amendment onsite video display units. Amends... Amends zoning ordinance Article Seventy-two Sign Control Regulations, Section Seventy-two dot one, definitions, and amends Article Seventy-two Sign Control Regulations to add regulations concerning onsite video display units. A public hearing has been held, and the committee recommends approval.
Is there any discussion? Oh, did I hear a second? I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Madam Chair, I have some comments on that.
Yes.
These video display units, they're mounted on gas pumps, and I think the intent is that only the person pumping gas can see it. My concern is, we have a very tight sign ordinance, as it is, and our city goes to a lot of effort and policing on the signage that gets put up by individuals for businesses. And we have an allowance for digital signs already. They have restrictions on how often they can change their message. So, it's a pretty tightly regulated sign ordinance. This seems to be a little contrary to that sign ordinance in that instead of tightly controlling the signage, we're telling them that they can have another type of signage that frankly, I think is tacky. And think that this is a point where we either, we should, we should take, frankly, I think we should not approve these, but to make a point that we're not going to allow this to go down a slope, a slippery slope that may allow some other things to happen in the future that could clutter our community. I think we have a nice city, and I would hate to go down that path that would, this would proliferate further.
I've got one question. Have anybody thought about the safety of these things that they're at the gas station, the people not looking at what's going on around them?
Well, I think, you know, this might be a forum to discuss that.
There's a restriction within this proposed ordinance that regulates visibility from the property lines. It will be the installers, it will be their job to make sure we can't see these from the property line, whether it's screening or angle of the sign, however they choose to meet the requirements.
I'm not sure that's what Ms. Colley meant.
Because I'm thinking of recently, of a person pumping gas, and they're looking at this sign, and they're not aware of the other things that are going on around them. I'm thinking of it as a distraction.
Oh.
That's what I'm talking, as a distraction to the customer. But, you know, that's my question. I'm doing.
Anyone?
Madam Chair. The comment I had, the limit on ten signs, how is that established? And for the gas stations throughout the city that already exceed ten pumps, and I believe there are a few with more than ten video display units currently, what is the process for that? Moving forward, will those businesses be going through a waiver process?
From the few local businesses that we've actually observed with these, we actually went around and measured the signs, we also counted, and there aren't any that have more than ten. But within the ordinance, we have a stipulation, regardless of how many pumps you have, whether that's twenty or five, you can't have more than ten total units. And that's the set limit, regardless of the size of the station, or the number of drive-through or fuel pump lanes.
Where did that ten limit come from? I just want to get that for the records.
It's just a number that staff thought was appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up to Les's concern, just to get some clarity. So, your thought is with regard to the content on those signs, or the frequency with which those signs, or those units would be used at, because it's not just gas. It's fast food, ATMs, just about anywhere I would think where you would have that face-to-face interaction with somebody.
Right. And my concern is just whatever content is there, I don't want to drive around town and constantly be hit in the face with some kind of digital message. I think that's, I think that's contrary to what Huntsville is about. That's my, that's my concern.
Just a clarification, Jim. If you could, is there precedent for other cities disallowing this type of?
Yeah, we've studied cities regionally, and some cities have decided to approve these, some have decided to not approve these, and some have decided to not address them. It's gone both ways. We've seen more not approve them or not address them than approve them.
So, what is the advantage to us? Why are we taking the step of approving them?
Because we wanted to address them. That's all that we've done so far, is just address them.
Was this initiated by the planning department?
This was brought to us by a council member that had been contacted by a business owner who wanted to try this business in the city. And they did it first, obviously, we went out, stopped them, because they had done it without permitting. That's how this started.
What would be the advantages of us having a policy that would permit these kind of signs?
Well, I'd say the advantages would be to the small business owner that owns the business for the signs. People could argue that if, while pumping gas, you could get advertisements for whatever they were advertising to help you in your daily routine. Commonly, we don't allow you to advertise off-site. That's what, this would be allowing off-site advertising, similar to a billboard, you know. Right now, we allow these if they do weather, news, and onsite advertising. But the businesses are not going to go put these TVs on top of gas stations. If you're, they're only allowed to advertise that, there's no money, there's no financial gain there.
Are those, Jim, are those allowed? If they do weather, news, or advertising about what's available in the business itself, is that allowed under our existing ordinances?
Currently, we've allowed it. You'll see Walmart, Costco, Sam's, some of those places have them right now, and they primarily are advertising drinks and food within the gas station and the gas prices. That's all they're, that's all they're running.
But there's no regulation with regard specifically to that type of unit in our?
In our ordinance, we don't have anything specifically addressing this sign.
If we vote this down tonight, though, what does that do to your situation for somebody else who tries to put one in?
You say that again, I'm sorry.
If we, if this is voted down, so say the planning commission elects to disapprove it, what does that do to you when somebody tries to put one in?
Oh, it will, you know, they won't be permitted, they won't be allowed, they'll never be installed.
So, they will not be allowed by our local ordinances, right?
Yeah, I would not see anybody coming. And the guys that own these businesses, who I've talked to regionally, have no interest in installing these signs unless they can advertise off-site. That's the only reason they would do this.
So, it's an additional revenue producer for the businesses that would put them in.
They are paid by companies to advertise and give small profits to the gas stations, is what I understand.
So, then the key there would be small profits. So, this is not going to be a serious revenue source or a serious impediment to any business that doesn't have them.
Yeah, I don't know, I didn't answer that question yet.
I don't think Claudia is with us tonight. So, I think that we have a motion and a second on the floor. And discussion is ongoing, but I'm just bringing this up at this point, because there are a couple of alternatives that we have. If we, we could, of course, vote in favor of it, we could pass it. We could vote against it. Or the motion could be rescinded, and the second rescinded, and a replacement motion. And somebody correct me if I'm wrong on Robert's Rules of Order. Since Claudia is not here, I'm open to suggestion. But if we had, if we had the motion rescinded, and then make a replacement motion to send it back to committee for further discussion, we might be able to get some questions answered, or we may have enough information tonight to vote it one way or another. So, I'm just throwing that out there. If, you know, if y'all do want to send it back to committee, we could do that.
If I could add one thing, the gentleman that, one of the gentlemen that runs this business in other cities was supposed to be here tonight, he's not here. So, if you decide to vote which way, you could send it back so he could come and and give you more information about how the business is run next time. I don't know, that's just a suggestion, definitely don't have to do that.
It sounds like we have a lot of unanswered questions and could use more information, and he might be the best person to give us that.
Did you make the motion?
Yes.
You've got a motion on the floor. What would you like us to do, vote on it, or?
I would like to rescind the motion.
Who made the second?
Second.
You made the second to?
To rescinding the motion.
Who made the second on the original motion?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay, let's do this. And I don't know, without the legal department here, I'm not absolutely certain that we're doing this by Robert's Rules of Order, but I am confident that Kim will get us cleaned up. So, is there any further discussion before we vote on rescinding the motion? Okay, all in favor of rescinding the motion to approve zoning ordinance amendment onsite video display units, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and the floor would entertain a new motion.
I would make a motion that the, this ordinance be returned back to the committee for further discussion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. That's, Jim. Okay, I guess that's it.
I recommend invocation of items one and two.
Okay, any, do I hear a second? Any discussion? All in favor of invocation of items one and two, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Our final item is committee chair appointments. And I would like to appoint Kyle Collins as zoning committee chair. Subdivision, I always do it backwards. Subdivision Committee Chair. And Kyle has agreed to do that. And I would like to appoint Les Tillery as zoning committee chair. And Les has agreed to do it, and I thank you very much, and thanks to Kyle, who's not present tonight. And we're sorry that Vince is not able to continue as chairman, but he's done a great job, and maybe he'll do it again someday. Is there any further business? Thank you very much, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And drive safely, treasure your children and your parents, and all of your friends, and be thankful. Committee's adjourned, the meeting's adjourned.